This conference will now be recorded.
So we'll call it order in Monterey, Slide four to six oh two on November sixth. We have all three board members present here in town hall. And Dennis, thank you for joining us. We have two grant requests from you. One for the pavilion construction, which is the next phase of the same grant
Yes.
that we already have received, right?
That's right.
And then for the heating system, is that for the town hall or the community center?
That's the community center.
Community center.
And you look at the heating system and making recommendations. And it's also establishing a maintenance plan over multiple years that the Mass Cultural Council expects the recipients to follow the plan.
Is it just heating or is it air conditioning too?
Well, I think from right here during the warm hot summer days, the current little window air conditioner is insufficient.
Right.
So an ATRAC system, heating and cooling would be appropriate to look at, to evaluate. I'd like to point out that in both cases, both the pavilion and the the systems group, the maximums are set by Mass Cultural. So that's what you see in the request. So for example, the systems, they go by a population in a community. And that particular amount is eight thousand dollars. So because it's a one to one ratio, the town would be required to have a local match at four thousand dollars. And with the pavilion grant, since the pavilion grant is still underway, the second phase, meaning the design and permitting. And we'll know that maximum number from the engineers as they finish their work this month.
And they'll generate an estimated project amount.
Exactly.
But it won't be the bid about necessarily.
More than likely, it won't be that maximum two hundred thousand, but we don't know until they give us that amount in writing. So in a worst case scenario, it would be two hundred thousand dollars as opposed to four hundred thousand, which would be the entire project pavilion construction phase. And then the town would have to just match half of that. But I think it will probably be very much below that two hundred thousand dollar local match.
And did you ask for two hundred?
I reflected the maximum in the
That's maximum you can apply for, but was it your plan to apply for the maximum?
Yes, yes.
Well, I think if I'm not mistaken, in the phase that we're currently in, the engineers will estimate a project amount.
Right.
So if they estimate that the whole project is going to be two fifty, we'd ask for one hundred and twenty five.
Right.
Gotcha.
Which you would know by the time you're submitting this.
Exactly.
Okay.
What we do know is that
It's about eighty thousand. It depends on how well their chips go, but it's about eighty thousand.
And they should be submitting their invoices according to the requirements of Mass Cultural Council by the seventeenth of this month. So we should have a very good idea either on the seventeenth or shortly thereafter before the end of the month, what that number is. And if the board would like me to come back and tell you exactly what that estimate is, I'd be glad to do that.
We'll definitely forward along any information that you have. Other than that, are there any more questions on that forms? We'll go ahead and sign them.
Or is the plan that we would put the additional amount onto the question?
Town meeting, yeah, I think would be the way that I mean, if it's one to one, and let's say the project comes in at a hundred and fifty thousand, then we don't need to ask for money. But if it comes in at two hundred, we need to ask for fifteen thousand dollars.
Right.
So hopefully it's in that range and not the full four hundred. But we'll know a lot more
I'm deeply hoping that.
I mean, do you see what West Oxford was doing after that? And I'm not saying that we can do the same, but West Oxford was doing very affordable pavilions.
Of course, the advantage that they have is they don't have to put a new bathroom.
Yeah.
That's where most of the cost is.
Well, yeah. All right, well, we sign those for you, Dennis, and
Thank you.
Please send us along any information as you learn it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Peter.
Yes. I want to read something into the record. This is an email that I sent on October ninth to the select board and the town administrator. The subject line is five thousand five hundred and twenty seven fifty now due, all in caps, exclamation point. To the select board and town administrator, I have copied below all recent emails regarding invoices of Beacon Integrated Solutions, the town's indispensable consultant for our efforts to establish a municipal solar array in Monterey. They are in chronological order with the most recent dated nine twenty three first. The most relevant lines are highlighted. I have failed to approve, if I have failed to approve the invoicing note in the Monday nine twenty three email, please know that I hereby approve Beacon's six hour estimate. Also note that I spoke with the town administrator on nine sixteen, September sixteenth, about the then passed due invoice and was assured that it would be taken care of, but as of my most recent communication with Beacon has yet to be paid. This is a personal embarrassment to me and systemically unacceptable. Please address this unfortunate situation immediately and advise me when it has been resolved. Peter McCatt, Chairperson Renewable Energy Working Group. That's from a month ago. I did not receive any answer to that email. Nobody tried to explain to me what had happened. Nobody did me the courtesy of answering my email. Nothing. I started this group almost three years ago. And the select board at that time gave me a choice as to whether I wanted to do an ad hoc group, not do open meeting law, not do formal protocol, all that kind of stuff, or be an authorized governing municipal body. And I said, okay, I'll, and this was at a time, three years ago, when we were experiencing a lot of bad actors. My wife, in the same period, answered thirteen open meeting law violations in one year. I said, okay, I'll give it a shot. I'll play by the rules. We have done that. We have had three consecutive town meetings that showed strong voter support for our project every step of the way. We have paid a modest sum to a consultant who is always there for me. I don't make a habit of it, but if I have something I want to know on a weekend, I email her. She emails me back. She is responsive. She does not deserve this kind of treatment. I do not deserve this kind of treatment. If it were up to me, I would write a personal check and FedEx to it tomorrow. And I think you should do the same. This group is responsible for what I'm talking about here. That's not my job. I'm doing my job. I'm seeing to it that we do important work to address climate change. I think I deserve better support. That's all I have to say, unless you have something to say in answer.
Well, I'm sorry, Peter. The delay, there's no, there's no good, there's no good excuse. It's my understanding that it's a little more complicated than just, we don't write checks every week, as you know. We do biweekly warrants.
We're talking about an invoice that goes back to August.
I understand. So as I understand, it is set to be processed along with our bills, this warrant. And my apologies for the delay. And
I talk to this person every week. She's not pressing me. I think she should. I'm not a happy camper. I've been doing my job. You should do yours.
Sorry, I'm just looking up the page on invoices.
I thought we had talked about it in one of the select
Or when you talked to me about it.
We did at a select board meeting that you were out, you were out, we did.
Yeah, you said we'll take care of it.
Yeah.
And you did.
It's all on me.
You know, I have my opinions on what caused this situation. That's in the past. Now the people responsible for this situation, for addressing this situation are sitting in front of me. I'm not here to rehash old stuff. I'm here to see that our consultant, who has done superior work for our project, gets paid. This is fundamental. This is the basis for business, for government. You know, you pay your bills.
You're right. Is it on the budget? Is the payment on the warrant?
The next
It is on the next warrant to be processed.
What's the next one? Not the one that went through?
It's coming through. Yeah.
Why did it take till November to get the August, an August bill on the
Took me that long to figure out what the budget was because it hadn't been rolled over and it was in some weird spot. I had to have a meeting with Eric to figure out where the payment was. I didn't even know where the monies were coming from. So
Have you been in our VEDAR? It's not good.
I know it's not good.
I didn't, there wasn't even a
Yeah.
It wasn't
Do you think you could write something about what the process was to sort through this so we can at least answer his question about why it took so long?
I also, I mean, I think it's too long, but also just to put it in context, we're not a business where
It's not six weeks.
where one member of senior leadership can sign a check, right?
Right.
We are a municipality where regular bills are delayed at the very least two weeks because of our processing time. And anything that's a grant or requires anything beyond the bare minimum is off in two pay periods. So as much as I well, as much as I understand that, it, it took a couple of months. The VEDAR is not, it has, it's very problematic. And the way that it's put in is not clear. And when I've gone through VEDAR in the past, since I've been on the board for three and a half years, I often notice huge errors or lines where there's money spout of a line that has nothing in it and then a line of, you know, the same line found elsewhere that where the money really is. And with grants in particular, it gets, it gets sticky. The amount of paperwork and everything for reimbursement and grants in particular, we've been working with Courtney on getting all of the DEP stuff. It's enormous. And yes, it's, it's too long. But it's on the, it's on the next, it's on the warrant. So I don't know.
Is there anything we can do? I mean, are you, it sounds like you're already starting it sort of for it, but is there anything we can do to simplify the VEDAR system so your problems aren't?
I obviously don't know because I mean, in this case, in this case, I was just caught up with the things and fiscal year got caught up. And then the invoice just was got behind. And then, then I was trying to look into it and I was trying to find the actual account number that had been supposedly rolled over because I could find it in one fiscal year, but not the next fiscal year. And so eventually I just had to get in touch with Eric and Nicole over there to try and figure out where things were. Figure out some things, but there's still some stuff that we need to work on, which are, again, almost always grants and how grants get rolled over and moved over from one side to the other.
So the other accounts don't have that?
Do you, like the normal operating budget accounts? No. I know. I found it mostly with trying to just figure out where grants come from and how, and the paperwork and how it works. And some, some of the grants, some of the grants I'm finding aren't in the system because I think they kind of missed while I was in the transition. They were, they came before me. They didn't quite get in the system. I didn't know where they were. So I'm still trying to get caught up on grants, like where they are and try and get them in the system. So
Roger, could you call the consultant and just say, you know, we're working on it and this is
I emailed her, but I'll call her.
Call her and just to extend, you know, that you've got margin readers from the select board and that you want to address this and, you know.
Yeah, they should be, it should be checks. I thought they were going to be, I had planned to have them out for this previous one, but by the time I had talked to Eric and had gotten them to the accountant, they're getting very, they had a little bit more flexibility when I first started and now their flexibility on when payments invoices get to them is pretty much they put a line there and I got it to them on Friday. And then we're like, oop, it's out for Thursday, so we can't do it next week. So
So is this a warrant we're signing this week or next week?
It's a warrant, the warrant for this week, this next week. Yes.
Okay.
So this is, this is the second
So we'll be signing a warrant on Monday and the check is Tuesday. Tuesday because of the holiday and the check can be in the mail on Tuesday. Yep.
Well, that'll be a little bit
Better Wednesday. Yep. You know, I had actually, Roger, we touched base about it. And I, and I, probably about a week ago, and that's when you told me that it wasn't going to be last warrant, it was next warrant. And I just figured that is what it is. They don't, they don't add in extra warrants in between the biweekly ones in general. They don't because if we try to make an exception for this and that, all of a sudden we have a warrant every week. And, and as much as it's not good, that it's, that it's weighted, I this happens with municipalities and it's not good and
And I think it's not a surprise. I mean, I think the fact that he's saying that hasn't said anything about it, like the fact that because she works with municipalities enough and know that that's not atypical.
Yep.
So
But I mean, it's definitely
Doesn't mean we shouldn't be better than
Getting more on top of bills, I think is, is part of the reason that we need to absolutely find an administrative assistant soon.
Any word by then?
Not good.
Not good.
Not good.
Person who we were going to ask decided that we didn't want to do it. So the other person was Chris. So
Right.
So we're
Started
Going to start over again.
I'm highly at this point, I'm wondering if we can find anyone in Monterey, even if we could be flexible. But finding someone in Monterey, whether they can do nights or daytime, I don't know. We, we need to get somebody in there. All right. Moving on, recycling contract.
We just hit the side.
Yeah.
I know a question for you since I was reading that letter. And is this a new surcharge to one percent?
Let me see the letter. So, um, yeah, yes. So
Because that's two and a half percent plus one percent every year.
Waste management wanted a much bigger increase. And what they basically talked them down to was that, I think they, they wanted to go to like a five percent annual increase on the, on this. And they talked them down to keeping it two and a half percent and putting in the one percent change in the processing thing. So it was, I, I don't remember exactly what the numbers were, but at one point Jen ran some numbers for us to show that it was strongly in our benefit to do it that way.
Yeah, I've never seen something like that.
Yeah. Well, it's a weird thing anyway, because the way this works, there's the processing thing, right? And then there's the, and the estimated materials value, essentially. And if the material's value is high enough, then we actually get money back.
Right.
And that's actually happened, just not in the last few years because the price of recyclables fell significantly during COVID. But we're still with that, we're still paying less for the recyclables that we do, even though it's a higher transport fee because it's got to go all the way to Springfield. It's still less than the cost per ton. Yes, it's always so. Yeah, but that's why they wanted five percent and that's what they got talked down to. Five percent a year would have been a lot. Yeah, I know, right?
That's waste management.
Well, yeah, I'm not shocked there.
Well, I'll move that we approve the five year extension of recycling, recycling contract.
I'll sign it.
And I'll call, oh, yes. Yes, and we'll sign it.
I do think I need to convene transfer station group again, I think. We need to talk about a few things, including options for dealing with glass. I spent some time talking to Gary and Bill. People put a lot of returnables into the bottles. Apparently we, Monterey used to have a thing where we had the people sorting those out and collecting the returnables. But that was stopped because there was some discomfort with some parties regarding what was happening to the money gotten from the returnables. And I personally don't care what happens to those, that money. If it's coming out of me as solid waste, I'm happy.
Can returnable bottles not go in the glass and glasses?
They can, but there's no reason to do so, right? Like we, you can get money back for them.
Yeah.
They go, they basically get processed through that scheme, but you get money back for them, right? Like Gary was telling me that I noticed they actually have some volunteers and it would be a very different group of volunteers, I presume from the sound of it, than the ones who do the swap shop, who come in and actually help sort through the bottles to take out the returnables. And they get a substantial amount of money for it that I think they're using, he said, for like the Christmas, Christmas clothes drives and like Christmas kids gifts and stuff. A bunch of veterans are collecting it and using that money for pretty decent things. I mean, it's a few thousand dollars that they're collecting just from the bottles and it's coming out of the waste stream. I mean, yeah, it's going into a recyclable stream somewhere else. Apparently, according to Gary, one of the beverage companies comes and picks up the returnables from the transfer station.
Who does?
One of the, one of the beverage companies.
Oh, right.
Yeah, they actually come and just pick them up like they do from the, from domains or whatever. Yeah, for free. Yeah, exactly. So I sort of feel like if we could figure out a way to do that, that would not be a terrible thing. There's also, if we separated glass from the other recyclables, we actually would get a monetary benefit because the glass messes with the machinery in the sorting facility.
Yeah.
But I think it would be difficult to do in the current facility. I'm not really sure whether it would be, we'd get back enough money from doing it to make it feasible to do. But I was surprised to see that in there because I hadn't caught it, but it was in the letter, which is what made me notice it. Anyway.
All right. The next item of business is the One Berkshire Grant Support Letter.
I'm not that familiar with all.
Are there any questions or comments otherwise? Go ahead and sign it.
Yeah. The board did it last year.
What did they actually do?
One Berkshire is an organization that helps promote business and industry in municipalities. And they use the support from the municipalities to apply for grants.
Right.
To help.
Okay.
I don't think they helped much here.
Directly, yeah.
I think they're more up to Piscia, up in the Lenox, up north, the North Canyon.
Honestly, the more I think about it, the more I wish they had made, made We could have a, we could have other stores, we could have other commercial ventures. I mean, I don't know if anybody would put them there, but
I don't know.
I don't know. They might come.
So Regional Transportation Advisory Committee reconstituted itself or was reconstituted and I think Lynn has been serving and is willing to serve again, but they need an appointment letter from us. So
I'm happy to move that we appoint Lynn Spursky to the new and improved Regional Transportation Advisory Committee.
That's a second motion.
Any other discussion? Call vote? Yes. Yes. So it's unanimous. I will get the appointment letter out and Lynn will serve there. And then similarly, Heather Barberry reached out and wants a representative to Southern Berkshire EMS regionalization study. And Susan
I think she works at Fairview. She is at Fairview. She's like, she's their Yeah, she, she works with emergency management and something.
Did you say you'd do it?
I did. I mean, I'm already working on the prior and they're talking about rolling paramedic service into that. So I feel like
No, not
being part of that conversation makes it like, I don't know what will come out of the conversations, but you don't know that until you do it. So
Well, I will, there's unanimous agreement and I will send, I think I have to send them an email and tell them that it's you.
Um, and just go ahead and give them my direct email so that they can I need to give you my, I will comment and give you my password.
At least I can hear it faster now. I can't figure out.
I have a book for that because
I subscribe to password manager. I'd get him up to it.
My husband actually has an online walk thing and I'm, I'm like, you know what? If they took my computer, at least maybe they wouldn't have the password, but with it.
Yeah. Okay, so the land donation, it's, it's getting a little more, a little more complicated. We have a few decisions to make. I kind of spoke, Donna emailed this afternoon. She's been in touch with Lombardo's attorney. I kind of spoke on behalf of the board, also with the understanding that we can come back and answer any of those questions differently. I just thought some of them were, were common sense.
I definitely think that there has to be, we, we have to keep the ability to keep its purposes as open space by passing on to another organization at that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree with that.
Being the right thing to do because, I mean, we may end up wanting to keep it and it may be perfect, but it may not be. And we are not really a land maintenance organization.
Yeah, we got enough land to take there.
So I think we'll make sure that's in there.
I would like to see the, if both soil testing and I'd like him to sign an affidavit that there's no underground tanks that haven't been dealt with or anything else. I want him to sign something.
But wouldn't that, if he accepted on there, there should be drawings.
And I'd like, and I'd also like any, any drawings he has of what, what's under there.
Well, and if anybody asks Well, and if anybody asked.
The septic system, well, where are they?
Has anybody asked him for the document tape, does he have any documentation for the land?
Right.
I can ask, I mean.
Well, because, I mean, can we go back and see if he got the permit for the septic?
I'm not trying to.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
This is so long ago, I don't.
Yeah, but if you, if you had the permit for the septic, it usually makes you pull the one out.
What, you mean the previous one?
Yeah, the previous one.
I, so I, and I asked Dean, by the way, and he said that, and this isn't, doesn't answer all the questions. But that when they did the demolitions, all the material was trucked away, like, does lead or asbestos potentially some of it contaminated the ground? Yes.
Well, it's just a question of how much.
Yeah, it's just.
Right, right, but, but it would be good to know the level of.
Yeah. Is it a top, is it like a nuclear?
Are we gonna need to do remediation?
Yeah.
And we don't know that until we test the levels around the foundations to find out, because if it does require remediation, that is expensive as heck.
So Donna said, probably, you know, I didn't get to pass on to everybody that we can do a 21E assessment, I don't know what that is. Neither do I.
Okay.
But.
And she didn't plan it.
But, but, um.
I'll just.
Well, I said.
Two, the 21E assessment, hang on.
I said, we're looking for hazardous materials, environmental hazards, and she said, um, there's no problem getting a 21E assessment. And I asked what one cost, and she said she didn't know offhand, but she'd asked around her office. I mean, not that she would know the exact cost, but we could all forget.
Twenty-one E Massachusetts Oil and Hazardous Material Release Prevention Act, also known as the state super bowl, is a statute encompassing issues related to the ID and cleanup of property contaminated by releases of oil. And or hazards with material related to the environment, right, but unfortunately, I'm not sure.
It didn't sound like it did asbestos and lead.
Um, they usually includes substances, soil, groundwater, sediment, surface water, indoor air.
Hazardous material. But like a full-on 21E could be extremely expensive, but just doing, uh, like soil testing for some of the more common.
Yeah.
Contaminants like lead, oil, asbestos, and a couple of others is probably a much more manageable level.
Yeah, you deal with a, for the building, you don't have that shit.
Yeah, you don't do the whole property, right?
It'll be a big one.
But also, where were the oil tanks for the furnace that was heating those buildings and?
What happened?
What happened?
Yeah, and I think the other thing just to keep in mind is Lombardo's really have owned it for a relatively short period of time.
It's like sixteen years?
Well, they, but, and the amount of time where they owned it, where there were buildings was very short. So what they may have personally is documentation of the demolition.
And I definitely.
But other stuff we might, it's probably worth looking through whatever town files we have.
Right.
But they're not like a hundred-year owners of the property that, so.
I get that, and I'm not, I'm not like angry at him or anything, it's not that at all, I think it's a very generous gift, I'm just trying to protect us.
We'll see what we can get, yeah. Yeah.
From owning a property that may have.
Yeah, that costs a lot of money.
Yes, I do not want it to be a, a money sink for us, especially, I mean, it's a beautiful site. You know I'm in favor of this, but I just wanna make sure we're protected and no one can say we didn't do good deal.
How do we go about looking for drawings, would there be some?
Would that be the building's health inspector?
They're like here, they're here.
So probably some health inspector stuff there.
Right.
They're probably sitting in the same room.
So septic would be there.
Septic, maybe wells are there, um, building permits are downstairs, if, older ones like that are gonna be downstairs, so, cause I don't think they, I don't know when they, they, the electronic goes back to, but.
And do demolition permits would be?
Demolition is building.
Building.
Oh, yeah, demolition is building.
And that was twenty years?
So, we'll consult, whatever, yeah, it was about twenty years, a little less than twenty years.
The eighties would have been important.
The demolition?
The demolition.
It was like two thousand and six.
Okay, so twenty years, okay.
I probably told them they owned the property for sixteen or eighteen years.
They probably owned it about twenty, eighteen, and they, they owned it for a couple of years and then demolished it.
Over that?
Eighteen.
Okay.
Yeah, they did, because of the trouble.
So the demolition was during their tenure, but?
They didn't have a long.
But their tenure is about two, yeah.
Right.
So, we'll look, I think we should look internally for whatever we have, we should look externally for engineers that can do 21E and, and let's get a sense of what that entails. And how we can do it within reason, and then. I think, what else do we have to do? Oh, I think we're in general agreement that we should have some flexibility to move the property within departments of the town, so if we wanna give it to Parks Commission.
Yes.
And also, we should be able to, as a backup, be able to pass it on to a nonprofit organization like the NRC.
I mean, I have no problem with it never being developed on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree too.
But I don't, yeah, it would be, and certainly, a lot of nonprofits, they have to designate if they go under, right, don't they have to designate? Another nonprofit that all of the. Property would pass on to, and so a lot of times that becomes actually the town, which is, I think, why we own some of the land that we own. Because there were organizations that were formed and they dissolved and the land went to the town.
Town, right.
Um, so. If we're the town, we can't make it the town, but we might be able to make it like another nonprofit that can fulfill the same goals for the property. So. Um, I think we're in general of agreement there, it's just about the specific wording, and. Yeah, that's where we're at, we'll look through building files, we'll look through health files and see what we can see, and also just ask them for what they have.
But we gotta look for three different lots, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you know what, they might have split it up since they've owned it, I don't, I wouldn't, and they might have combined it.
Because the septic is on one, the newer septic.
But he, the septic isn't what the idea of building a larger building.
So did they put that septic in?
I think so.
Was that, was there before?
I know, I thought, I may be wrong, but I thought he said we put in a septic for seventy-five units.
Yeah.
And why that seventy-five?
Well, so it used to be many units, although each building had multiple units and, and.
Right. Were there seventy-five units there?
No, no, and I think the number he threw around is fifty or forty, I don't think it's seventy-five, it's still.
It's still a lot, yeah.
So, um, we'll see what they have, we'll see what we have, and we'll see who we can bring in to test for hazards. And then I, I, I think, they said that we have a timeline, and I s, I passed on an email, so maybe you saw it, but I said, I don't think we really have a timeline, I think it's they have a timeline.
Yes.
But we'll do our due diligence and all these things.
I mean, do you want me to tell them to start going through somebody that seems like a prime example?
Document?
Document?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can show them it around.
Yep, it's really easy, but the ones downstairs, I don't think are locked, these ones are locked.
I think it's probably on Pixie, considered Pixie Road, yeah, cause it's, there's, there's three acres.
Right, yeah, they, they, if we look at the map, if we look at the map, it's a.
But it might also be under Williams Lane, yeah.
Cause, cause two of the properties are Williams Lane.
Is that the little road that goes in, and dry road that goes into the property?
That's a right of way.
So.
It's a road.
And that's the other piece of this, I don't know how it factors in, but we need to make sure that, that her property maintains access.
Mm-hmm.
And like, if we do end up using it for public purchases, we're gonna have to figure out a way to reroute that, so that she can have some protection from public using the property.
Yeah, I mean.
You're talking about a email about the way the property line goes, but.
Yep.
The thing is, if we accept it, and with these restrictions, we probably won't be able to change the boundaries, what we could change is probably with easement.
Yes, with the easement.
Easement, there's a plant trees along there.
Yeah, or put a fence up or something.
Yeah.
Put a, might, you know, put some kind of natural, hedges.
Hedges, like by the beach, the Arbor ID or whatever.
Yeah, something like that, I, when she, I, I printed out, I had her, you know, like, I can see what her concern was.
Yeah, and, and given where the septic, the pump-up septic system is, it may not be possible to route it in the place that makes the most sense, and surely we can do something. Anyway, okay.
And then we gotta apply to the compound for.
We, we, we'd have to come up with a plan that's workable before we can even go to the.
I think what we would be doing, assuming we wanna do something significant with the properties, we would be employing a engineer.
Having a plan, yeah, a civil engineer.
Yeah, that would really do it right, and not.
Yeah. Yeah, piecing.
Cod job.
Yeah.
They'll really do it right.
A decent plan.
Yeah.
Agreed.
That takes into consideration the easement and the laws about water and everything.
Yeah.
So. All right, um, the bylaws, I sent out something, I sent out a document just before the meeting, and I think it's mostly stuff that we've talked about before.
Something.
Different. I was just gonna ask, what is, is there a difference between that document you just sent out for meeting and what?
Which one was?
What was, yeah, not, it's just reorganized. Okay.
Yeah, I brought that up, that's why I thought it's the same thing.
It's similar, it's similar, so what I wanna do at this point, and if anyone notices anything that's missing, what I wanna do at this point. Is go to, I think, the bylaw review committee first and say, do you know the answers to some of these questions?
Right.
And just start there, and then if they can answer maybe of the ten questions, maybe they know answers to three of them, and then, and then we go to town council or do the research and figure out. You know, what happened to the volunteer fire department real estate tax exception, or, or, I think this question that I know is already for town councils about the departmental revolving funds. Then, once we get these questions answered, we'll probably need to still come back and make some decisions like, oh, the agricultural commission is still on the books, but. Here's the history of it, and do we want to recommend removing it? We'll make a final decision, right now I just feel like we're lacking a little bit of information, cause it just was on the two thousand and six version, it wasn't on the version presented to us. I assume it's just recommended to be removed, but I wanna clarify.
Did you, did, so David took the document I had started and like added to it, based on questions I raised and had that, I think, at that meeting?
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't know, did he send you a copy of this from last weekend?
I had, I haven't synthesized that altogether, um, but I should probably do that, yeah.
Okay, do this, that was just gonna say, some, cause some of these might be in there, I don't know if they are.
But I think. I think they're probably gonna know the answer to some of these, they're gonna say, oh yeah, we did remove the agricultural commission because it's just end of fund. Or they're gonna say, actually, town council said it's not a bylaw, and then. It's just gonna be a, a step-by-step thing of trying to get these all hammered out, and then what I will do at the end is renumber.
Yeah, but.
But I don't wanna jump the gun and then have to.
Renumber, then have to renumber again, so, agree.
All right, I will keep moving on that, if anyone notices anything that's missing, and I will look through what David said, cause I didn't do that, and I will make sure that we get.
But like, I think it helped him that I started that, so then he had a template for how to.
Yeah, and then that's what the document I sent goes along into too, is like, these are the changes that we're going to present when we present the whole document, here's what we added, here's what we deleted and why.
So this one is, is the actual bylaw document, is that the same one that we previously had, or are there changes on it?
Yes. It's basically what you had, it's basically what, when you had made edits to the one that I had prepared, it's basically that.
It looks like it's the same. Okay. Yeah, I see.
So I will look through what David said to see if there's.
I do think that.
The further updates.
I think we should go ahead and put a fine table in there or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, cool, all right.
Still getting it ready.
I know, it's a lot, it's a lot.
It's a lot.
But it's better to do it now while we're still, otherwise you have to start all over again, what were the issues?
Yeah.
Um, can I administer your update, Roger?
We had Jimmy Mullin from the Foxborough come over to help with the, as a temporary town clerk, everything went well. Um, we had six hundred and four voters out of seven hundred and ninety-six registered voters come in, which was seventy-five point eight percent, and they finished around one AM. With all the hand counting and everything, so. There was some, those electronic counters would have been nice. So, but that went well, and.
Can you imagine if it was ten thousand instead of, yeah, six hundred?
So that went really well, um, as stated earlier, the admin assistant decided, she, they reached out to her and she decided that she didn't want the job, the position, so I'll be starting over again.
Where did she live?
She lived in Osterlich, which, Osterlitz, which is just on the other side of West Offridge, kind of around over there, so. That was happening, and then just as general information, um, I went to a State nine-one-one. Berkshire County Sheriff's meeting, uh, that State nine-one-one is taking over dispatch. There are some concerns, but not really much we can do about it, because they're just doing it, and at some point we'll have to sign an agreement of, of understanding. At some point in time in the future about that, because I think they want everything done by January, it's on January first, but.
By the way, I would completely concur with your assessment of the ADU. Maybe on Monday, yeah, um, I, I also attended that, and, and they're, they're gonna put out ranks, as usual, the ranks.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
It's, it's pretty much intended for Eastern Mass, and they're not really very receptive to the issues of small towns. But then, they know that they're different, but they're like, well, sorry, not sorry, right, yeah.
Not really much you can do about it.
No, not at all, and today I went to a pay-as-you-thrown seminar.
Oh, yeah, how's that?
Um.
What was it, Susan?
Pay-as-you-throw, basically the idea of like paying per bag, the idea being, in some towns, originally when they started it, in towns it reduced the amount of municipal solid waste by like forty percent. But that's largely because at that point, there weren't really other dilution options, and we, we might see some reduction. Um, but we're certainly not gonna see that, because we've already got people, a lot of people participating in a way that diverts a fair amount. Or do they divert as much as they could? Probably not, would paying per bag increase that? Very likely it would for some people. The other question is whether or not we should be considering a law, like a bylaw to regulate the, what private haulers are doing. Because I know, for example, at least one of the haulers offers an option that doesn't include recycling. So basically, people are putting, and by law, in Massachusetts, you have to recycle, but there's no one enforcing it outside of that. So people are just choosing the cheaper option of just having trash hauling and then putting all their recyclables in that. Um, but we can pass a, a law that, you know, that says that any private hauler operating in Monterey must offer. Must include recycling in the service that they offer to our residents, um.
Then you can catch the sign in English for them.
But yeah, and then you have to police it, and.
Yeah, that's so hardcore.
I don't know, but some of them may just choose to not mess with that and to just go ahead and only offer, well, we know that in Monterey, we have to do this. And so, when somebody says, what will it be to get your services, our service includes this, and this is what it costs, instead of you can get this or you can get that. Anyway, I don't know, we're still thinking about whether this is something that would serve us, and I don't really have an answer. Part of me is like, yes, and the other part of me is, well. If we're not gonna see a big change in people's behavior, maybe it's not worth it, I, I'm just not sure. It didn't change my mind about that, other than the idea of the contract, or the, the rules that.
I think. You do charge by bag, how do you manage that?
It's not that, I mean, Berdson does it, it's not rocket science.
It does.
It, a lot of communities do it, it's not really hard, there are vendors.
Pretty good for stickers, do they have stickers or something?
Most people prefer, their bags and carts were way too small to do carts, but the other interesting thing, and I have, so you just, they have to buy the bag, that's it. There are vendors of the bag, you have to buy the bag or you can't do it. And you price the bag to make it better to have less trash than more trash. It's really, um, the other thing that was super interesting was actually there was some data supporting the idea that actually curbside. Actually gets better participation and ends up cheaper, I'm not convinced that for a town our size.
No, I gotta find it, it's hard to measure.
I find it very hard to believe, but in the towns that, but they did have a bunch of towns where they had actual data from. And it supported that thesis, I don't, I'd have to, I wanna get that data from her, and then try and do the same calculation specifically for us.
Anything else from you, Roger, from Susan Frank, anything that we should put on in a meeting agenda next week, if we meet next week, or two weeks, if we meet in two weeks?
What are we thinking is on the next agenda? Do we have any thoughts already?
Um. The land thing is gonna be something that we keep plugging away at. Um.
Yeah. I'll reach out to um Kim who had some uh uh some thoughts of potential people who could do the testing.
Yeah.
Um, and and, you know, maybe Donna, I know some too from other.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I wonder if like four things.
I I don't know, there's also Berkshire Environmental, um I know they they do water testing, I'm not sure if they do soil testing as well.
Yeah. It can't be that.
Um, rare.
Rare.
I don't think it is, but you have to know who they are.
Yeah.
Um.
So maybe we'll get a, it's not subject procurement, but maybe we'll get a couple praises, or at least explore like what our options are.
Yeah.
Is it a thousand bucks to test, take a couple soil tan- tannules around the the houses and like forty thousand dollars to do it?
Twenty, yeah.
Yeah, so we'll look around and and see what makes sense, and we'll look internally too.
Yeah, yeah, one other thing just to bring up is the um, the drawdown, it's still, and they're still working on that. Uh, it's down about six inches right now from from start, from what I can figure out, based upon going, uh looking at that online data.
Right.
So Mike, Mike Jermaine has been managing, sort of overseeing it, um he's been working with Pete Wilson to determine the number of cranks. Last I knew, we were up to forty cranks.
Jeez.
So on on the uh.
What was the usual amount that Jim put it down?
Uh. All the way.
All the way, yeah.
Oh, we don't know how much it is, sorry.
So back. Back when Maynard did it, because Maynard sent us an email at one point talking about it. He, that was back when they were managing three foot drawdowns, some of your six others, and he just kind of watched it. And opened it a little more or a little less, depending on where it was at, but that's a, it's not even just get it down three feet, it's a winter warmth process. Cuz it continues to fill.
Right.
Especially with the winters we're having.
Right now, it's not filling at all, cuz it hasn't rained in over three weeks. I think it's probably going down by evaporations.
I want, there are brooks, there's brooks, there's the brook that crosses Hugh Pie.
Yeah.
I bet that's still flowing.
Um, there's not a ton, it is flowing, but it's, I, in the twenty years I've lived here, I don't remember it being the only times I remember it being dried was a short period in August.
Yeah.
The Banner's Pond, which is spring fed, is now almost down to a mud puddle, it's probably down four feet.
Yeah.
Um, in the twenty years I've lived here, it has never been that low.
Yeah.
Not once, not even when we had droughts in August, ever, never.
I think Maynard wasn't concerned about the outflow too, cuz we have to manage the outflow.
Outflow.
Then, uh, it can't be over.
It can't be over like twelve cubic feet or something like that for a second, or I don't, I forget what it was.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so.
Is that for stuff downstream?
Yeah, you can actually see the difference over at the um, walk across the street here.
Yeah.
Yeah, normally, but normally, before we did the drawdown, cuz I, when I go to the post office, there's a um, there's a a pipe that comes out, and it's usually like three feet from the water, and now it's, you know, it's about half halfway up the pipe, so the water coming out, so there they have to, and it's noticeably fuller when you go up to where the pond is, where it actually drains out into that little area where the, where they have the station pipe for the for the uh fire trucks, there's like a little pond area there, so it's pretty full right now.
Right. And I gotta say it, there's, I was down in Goodwill Park, and I was like, wow, this is more water than I can stream, and then I realized, oh, right.
So it's down, it's it's down, I think, I think like six inches now, maybe, yes, some, maybe not that much, three inches, I have to go back and look at my numbers, but it's it's down significantly.
Well, I think the most important part is just the the transparency with the commission.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think that's been as good as it has been, and just, yeah. Letting them know what we're doing, and that way, next time we go for an extension or a new permit, they can base it off of.
Yeah, and I moved the uh, I had it there, I put a hand handmade a DEP sign, but I put it over the, I have actually put it at the dam, but I was supposed to put it at the the boat launch, so I moved it there today, so.
I'm just a little confused, like, like you just mentioned the condo, I'm a little confused by Noel's response at town meeting to the idea of that property, cuz I felt like on behalf of the Concom, she was saying, was she actually arguing against the town taking it? Or just saying that whatever we wanted to do, we'd have to get it approved by the Concom?
Yeah, I think that was it, and then.
That's what I thought. That's what I thought.
As opposed to what, uh like obviously?
Yeah, no, I think the point was like, just cuz you're the town, well, the gist that I got was just because you're the town doesn't mean you can just do what you want, you need to go through the steps.
Uh, well, yeah.
We're keen, I think we're keenly aware, which is good.
I know.
Of what we're gonna have.
They won't lose for good.
I'm possibly a little offended by the idea that she thinks that we wouldn't think that, but yeah.
Take shore first.
I mean, that's, that's maybe not.
And I don't know if they're gonna be thrilled about the idea of dump dumping a bunch of sand on the shoreline, but that would be somewhat.
Well, that's like, yeah, it's like at some point, we have to, they deserve to know what's gonna happen to it, but it's not like that's tomorrow.
No, no. I did hear from Hank Bowman, whose family actually owned the property back in nineteen, his grandparents owned the property back in nineteen forties.
So he's the one who sold it to Lombardi?
No, he's, they sold it to uh Matt Williams or something like that, who sold it to somebody who made it to Blue Heron landing, who then sold it to the Lombardos, I think.
Okay.
So, but he, he actually said, I asked him if there was a beach there, and he said there was a dock that they used to swim off of. Cuz it was, it was, it was back when there was a hotel. It was called Herbert's Cove Landing or something like that, cuz it's a Herbert's family, the Heber, Heber family.
Heber.
You know, I could be wrong, I think it might be that property. If you go on Wikipedia and you look up Lake Buell.
Yeah.
And I just have to say this, I just have to.
I wanna say it.
It's too good.
He he told me what the hotel's name was, but now I can't remember.
Um.
Like, where is this?
So I connected him with Rob Hoops from the historical commission to to have a conversation about it.
There was one part. Maybe it's not there anymore.
But you you just looked up Lake Buell?
Yeah. But at one point, part of Lake Buell, like the the shoreline near Lake Buell was kind of swampy, wetland.
Yeah.
And so a developer trucked in dump trucks full of gravel so that it could be dry and buildable. Like, that's why we have a conservation convention.
He uh, he did say that his grandfather did build a lot of homes on there.
Yeah, so this is under the Lake Buell Wikipedia?
Yeah.
Under private cottages, in nineteen seventy one, a family, I'm not gonna name it, purchased neighboring weapons and began filling with gravel. Cottages were built on the landfill and eventually sold.
Interesting.
So. We're not doing that.
No. But yeah, he was, he was very interesting, he had, he had a lot to say, and so I connected him up with, I can't even, Rob Hoops' phone number, and there's just, he's gonna try and but he was very excited about the transfer of.
Really?
Yeah, he was very much in favor of the town, except for the building. Uh Hank Bowman.
Okay.
Um. I don't know if anyone got to look at the November fourth minutes?
Oh, I do, I'm sure.
On Tuesday.
Yeah, they do, they're mine.
Okay.
I I had no edits.
So I'll say they're approved, disdrafted. Um, all right, is there anything else to go re- adjourn?
Heber's Beach is here, it opened in forty six, it included a lot of property, which hosted square dances, in nineteen fifty five, it was converted into a seven unit motel.
Yeah, that's a property.
Yeah.
Closed in sixty two, but continued to rent boats, then converted into apartments, and renamed first the Lee Side Lodge and then Blue Heron.
There you go.
So when he was young, it, there was a pine floor upon the second floor, and a knot fell out, so when he was young, he would peek down, the, the knot hole would watch the uh the dances in the nineteen fifties.
That's kind of adorable.
So that's what he told, so. He was really nice.
No, I love him.
Yeah, he has a lot of like anecdotal information. That's it.
That's from Bernard A. Drew, two thousand nine, Gibson's Grove and Turner's Landing, Lake Buell Sentry as a summer resort, Great Barrington, Mass. From Attic Revivals Press.
Do you know Bernie?
I can't remember.
He was my elementary school art teacher's husband, and he's still around, and he writes books about, he wrote one about Bear Town. Um, and he leads hikes sometimes, so sometimes you can go on hikes with Bernie Drew, um, he knows.
A lot about the local history.
He knows a lot about local.
Do you remember the Tom Mack Show? Ted Ted Mack, the Ted Mack hour? Ever heard of that?
No.
No, so he had a, it was back in the fifties again, it was uh like a, um, like a, a amateur amateur hour, but he had a camp, a music camp in Great Barrington. And they used to go to this specific piece of property to go swimming.
Wow, that's pretty cool, okay.
All right, well, I'll move that we adjourn, and we'll call vote.
Yeah.
And yes, so that's you to hand this vote to adjourn the meeting at seven oh three PM.
Should I reach out to Heather Barbiere or?